Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting to order. This is Tuesday, April 14, 2015. We are about to embark on our reorganizational meeting. It is the one and only time the superintendent has in charge of this particular meeting. My tenure will be very brief. We will be calling to order, we will be holding elections for chairperson, vice-chairperson, and clerk. So in the manner of opening the meeting, I'd like everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance please. I'd like to introduce the flag of the United States of America into the banner of the Father's and Son's foundation under God, in his hope, and in his mercy. And that's it. As you know, this meeting will be televised and recorded, and under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. We have a number of representatives from the press. Could you state your name?
Yes, tell me by the telephone.
Thank you.
You're open here at 6:00 today. My apologies, I'm very tired right now.
Mark, good evening. Thank you, you're welcome. I would like to start off the meeting by congratulating Mr. Dennis Francis and James Cutlass on their reelection. It was a difficult reelection process, I gather. Very small turnout, but you've both garnered an awful lot of support out there. So at this time, I will entertain nominations for the petition of chairperson of the Tewksbury Public Schools.
I'd like to put a nomination for chairperson, Chrissy Palamino.
Please, let me take a second there. Are there any other nominations for the petition, for the position of our chairperson? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion that nominates, nominations for chairperson be closed.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say. Motion was made and seconded. The motion has been moved and seconded. So in the name of Chrissy Palamino, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any ayes? Congratulations, Mrs. Palamino. You are the new chair of this year's Tewksbury School Committee. On that, I am going to hand it over to you. A little reassigning of seats.
Thank you, Dr. O'Connor.
My tenure is complete.
Thank you, Dr. O'Connor. At this time, I'd like to entertain nominations, nominations for the petition of vice-chairperson of the Tewksbury School Committee.
I'll nominate Dennis Francis.
Let's say that.
The name of Dennis Francis has been placed in nomination and was just seconded by Mr. Cutlass. Are there any other nominations for the petition of vice-chairperson? Hearing none, I entertain a motion that the nomination for the vice-chairperson be closed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded on the name of all those Dennis Francis, oh, I'm sorry, on the name of Dennis Francis for vice president. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Congratulations, Mr. Francis. At this time, I would like to entertain nominations for petition of the clerk of the Tewksbury School Committee.
I would like to nominate Mr. James Cutlass.
Second.
The name of Jamie Cutlass has been placed in nomination and has been seconded by Mr. Dick. Are there any other nominations for the petition of clerk? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion that the nomination for clerk be closed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded on the name of Jamie Cutlass for the, for school committee clerk. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Seeing none, congratulations, Mr. Cutlass, for the town clerk. I'm going to change your name, please. Okay, at this time, I have a motion to adjourn, adjourn the reorganization meeting and before we go into the regular school committee meeting at 7:15.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second to adjourn the reorganization meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Chairperson, I as well. We are now adjourned the reorganization meeting. We will start a regular scheduled school committee at 7:15 a.m. Thank you. I would like to call to order the April 14, 2015 School Committee meeting. The time now is 7:15 p.m. Our first order of business, since we already did the pledge allegiance, will be our student representative, Grady Cash, for giving his high school report.
Thank you. Notes from Tewksbury Memorial High School. Student council is celebrating Secretary's Day tomorrow and looking forward to knee-mask act for vacation. We're planning Teacher Appreciation Week for the first week in May, and we also elected a new executive board on Monday. Justin Petrie will be taking over my position as school committee representative next year. National Honor Society is tutoring on Tuesdays and Fridays mornings in the library and having a car wash on May 8th. The induction for junior members is May 12th. The senior class council, class dues are due by Friday to get the discount on senior week. Money for senior week activities will be due on May 8th. SAD has the mock car crash planned for April 28th. International Club is raising awareness for child poverty and hunger through UNICEF, and they're also planning a food drive. The freshman class council is hosting fundraiser at Orange Leaf tomorrow night, and our newest addition, Best Buddies. TMHS is the newest chapter in Massachusetts for the Best Buddies Program. It's a national program that pairs students from the general population with students with intellectual or developmental disabilities. We currently have over forty students participating, and they've already done five events. The next event they're going to do is mini golf and laser tag MVP on April 28th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Grady.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. O'Connor for our recognition this evening.
Thank you. This is perhaps one of the most exciting nights of our, of our year here at the school committee. We have an opportunity to bring together a number of very important people. First, I would like to introduce the Ginsburg family that is here this evening, Mark and what's Lisa are here along with son Joseph. As you know, it was, oh, I'm sorry, Matthew, excuse me. You look like your brother. As you know, we've started the Ginsburg Award in recognition of the contribution that the Ginsburg family has been making to the Tewksbury Public Schools that spans decades. In fact, we learned that approximately twenty years ago, Mark was involved at a playground construction project at the Heathbrook School as a parent there. So his contribution and his family's contribution, as I said, go back a great deal of time. Over the years, they've been very supportive of the Tewksbury Public Schools. They continue to support the schools. One of the senses has coached us, and Mark continues to be very, very much involved in everything from our long-range facility committee when we were looking at our schools a number of years ago, to generous contributions in both from the country club as well as our contribution to the schools in, in other ways as well. We have been giving out this award. Now, this is, I believe, our third year where we have recognized individuals in the community. Last year, we recognized the Rotary Club for their continued support over many, many years, particularly with our scholarships for our high school students. We have here this evening a representative of the French family, longtime community members, born and raised. Mr. Phil French is here this evening. He is a graduate of Tewksbury Memorial High School. His son is a graduate. There's probably many, many of our French offspring that have been graduates of the school as well. When we put out for nominations, we were, we actually received a number of nominations recognizing the French family. And quite honestly, the committee that selected the recipient was a very easy decision to make. The French family has been very much involved, particularly in athletics, over again since the nineteen seventies. I had to note that there are probably hundreds, if not thousands, of kids that have enjoyed the largesse of the French family at banquets, awards assemblies, end of season get-togethers. The family has been tremendously generous to all of our student athletes, as well as to our football team over the many years. In fact, Phil has been a Redmond supporter for, since the nineteen seventies. He goes back, he's been president of the Redmond Club. His son has also served in that capacity. So they have been just tremendous boosters for our schools and our athletic programs. So if we could have the Ginsburg family come on up, we have the award, Mr. French, would you like to come on up as well? Chrissy, you're going to give this. Brian's going to read the proclamation.
Just a moment.
Where's your light? Just a second. Brian would stand on the other side and swing around in the limo.
All right, so I have the proclamation. This is a special night for me, because this party right here has been Phil's playing, French's team. It's a special night for me. So resolution of recognition. He has been selected to receive the 2015 Ginsburg Family Award for their generous support to the Tewksbury Public Schools. Whereas Phil French and David French are graduates of Tewksbury Memorial High School, and David French is the current president of the Redmond Football Club, and Phil French was the longest-serving president of the Redmond Football Club. Redmond Football Club dominates $10,000 in scholarships to Tewksbury Memorial High School graduating seniors, and whereas many sports banquets, team dinners, and sport season breakup dinners are created by Frenches, and that's a great savings to the school. And David and Phil, the entire French family, are a huge part of the Tewksbury Memorial High School athletics. And the French family, Phil, Kathy, David, and Janet, are the first ones to raise money for a cause or to support fundraising efforts to boost the groups in Tewksbury. And the French family have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to them, self, and to the town of Tewksbury, whereas the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the significant impact the French family has had on Tewksbury Memorial High School. So now, therefore, be resolved, Mr. Mark Ginsburg enthusiastically presents the 2015 Ginsburg Family Award to the French family for their continued support and contributions to Tewksbury Memorial High School.
I'd like to add, we would get Mr. and Mrs. Ginsburg and Matt and Mrs. French, she's here this way. We got something I'd like to be talking to the school committee. So we're just going to go parking that way. Just go right up there to him. We want to make sure you get some good camera time out here. I can do it from inside. On behalf of the school committee, we again want to extend our sincere appreciation to the Ginsburg family, not only for the creation of this annual award, but into the addition, the family has also donated $5,000 gift specifically targeted to our schools. As a result, the French family will be part of the discussion with administration as how the money will be best spent. We would also like to congratulate the French family for receiving this award, and would like to extend our sincere appreciation for your partnership with our schools over the years. We have to, we have come to count on you and your invaluable support, time and time again. We couldn't thank you all enough for the wonderful things you do for the Tewksbury Public Schools, and we are proud to call you our partners for the Tewksbury Public Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you. Please, thank you. Appreciate you coming on again.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. O'Connor, I'd like to try to remember you again for the proclamation for the literacy month.
Thank you. I'd like to call the doing school. We have our staff members, students, administrators that are here. If anyone would come on up.
Oh, I think she is.
Right there, perfect. Mr. Francis, we're going to run through the slideshow first, a sort of an introduction. Now that everybody's facing this way, we'll have to all turn around and look that way.
So these are some pictures that we took of some of our reading events in the Duryan School during March. We had read around the Duryan School to pick off Dr. Seuss's birthday, and we had our usual drop everything in read times, which is twenty minutes of silent reading. We all went out in the hall and read together, staff, students included. During the month, we invited twenty-five students from Tewksbury Memorial High School to come and be guest readers in our classrooms, and we were very excited to have them join us as part of our literacy celebration. So it was pretty fun to have high school kids and to have our students, you know, sort of making friends with big kids, so they felt they were pretty special. Yes, there was a little snow. The rest of the slides are just some evidence of the writing that we do as a part of our literacy focus at the Duryan School. A lot of our writing in March tied into Dr. Seuss, so it's the one thing two came to my house, or describing socks, or talking about River the Turtle, or places that we might go when we grow up, and things that we would like to do. Our literacy activities went all the way down, this is a preschool activity, so our literacy book for reading, writing, and math, and went all the way down into our preschool years. So we have preschool readers, and again, we're back to kids out in the hall, and I think this is where we started. So that was part of our drop everything in reading in the Duryan School. That's, thank you.
Mr. Francis has a proclamation that he would like to read. If we'll ever get back together again, so we can make sure we're all on television. Can you see the camera? It's taking the picture.
I love the hat.
All right, Mr. Francis, you're on.
To proclamation or declaration, whereas the citizens of Tewksbury and the Tewksbury School Committee stand firmly committed to promote these readings as a catalyst for our students' future academic success, the preparation for America's jobs in the future, and their ability to compete in the global economy. And whereas the Royal Act Doing School staff, students, and parents have embodied significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in the principle of educational investment is the key to the community's well-being and long-term quality of life. And whereas the NEA, Read Across America, a national celebration of Dr. Seuss's 101st birthday on March 2nd, 2015, promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of our community students. And whereas the Royal Act Doing School has celebrated literacy month for the month of March 2015, and whereas the students and staff at the Royal Act Doing School circle the halls of the Duryan School to read along the Duryan for twenty minutes, a silent reading on March 2nd, 2015. And whereas the Royal Act Doing welcomed twenty-five students from Tewksbury Memorial High School as guest readers on March 16th, 2015. And whereas the students at the Royal Act Doing School were more than thirty-four hundred books during the month of March. Therefore, be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee call on the citizens of Tewksbury to assure that every child has a safe place to read together with a caring adult day, and that be further resolved that this party enthusiastically endorses the Royal Act Doing School's literacy month, and recommits our community to engage in programs and activities to make Tewksbury School children the best readers in the world.
I am, I am amazed. Did I hear three thousand, over three thousand? Look, that's my books that we have in the library. It's real. Unbelievable. How many books did you read?
How many did you read? I think I saw two each in here, maybe. That would be twenty.
Wow.
Wow, that's great.
How many did you read?
Twenty.
Yeah. And I mean, they're high graders, so they read twenty books each.
Tyler? Tyler?
He's a guest.
Tyler?
Oh, he's a guest. Oh, he's a winner.
He reads all the time. He's a successful translator because of all the literacy work that we do this week.
Tyler, thank you for coming out tonight. All right.
Can I just give him that paper?
And may I just say a special shout-out to Jan Bor, who really organized and went above and beyond to make this happen, and he just gave all his time to make this such a wonderful event.
And thank you for coming out this evening. We appreciate it. Thank you, Dury.
Dr. O'Connor, what presentations do we have this evening?
We have a presentation from Kristen Berga, principal of Tewksbury Memorial High School, on some of the changes that we're looking at running with our summer program this year. As you know, we do run a summer program, helping students pick up quarter fit, may have, may have forfeited or lost during the year, and there are some slight changes to how we're, we're running the program. We want to make you and the community aware of that. And welcome, Mrs. Basteri, who has been instrumental in running the summer program over these many years. Welcome, and you're on.
Thank you. So as Dr. O'Connor just preface my presentation, we, Cindy and I have talked this year a number of times about being the future of our summer, summer program, and, you know, we are making some, a shift in the online academic program that we're using during the school year, from using the virtual high school, VHS, to a program called Edgenuity, which will have access to a thousand seats, essentially, and every student in our building could take an online course next year, at least one online course. Actually, they could take ten if they wanted to. So with that availability, it made sense for us to look at creating a blended learning environment for the summer with having the, the online courses available. So I'll just give you a little bit, our current, this is our current summer school structure that we have right now. So currently, with our, the current organization, we are only offering courses in mathematics, history, science, and English. Students may only take a summer school course if they fail in any of these areas with a grade between fifty and sixty-four. The cost is $200 per course. Students cannot take a specific course in a subject area. So for example, if a student fails junior English, they would take a generic English course during the summer. This is the, the current structure has been the last number of years. Students are required to attend class five days a week for three hours for three weeks during the month of July. So with the addition of Edgenuity with the online, they will be able to take courses in every content area through the online program, Edgenuity. Most school students would be able to take courses in ELA, math, and in social studies. Students will be able to take a course to recover credit as well as for enrichment. So this is a change that we're able to make by offering, by having the Edgenuity available, that we will have courses that students could take for enrichment purposes, and Cindy and I felt that this creates a really positive academic environment here in the, in the school during the summer, that the kids who are coming here to take courses aren't just coming because they may have failed a course, that there may be kids coming who are taking it because they want to learn Chinese, or they want to learn German, or they want to take SAT prep, or they want to take ACT prep, or they want to take sociology, whatever it might be, whatever their interest is. So that the kids in the classroom won't know why that particular student is there taking that particular course. So hence why I've changed it to the name from a summer school to a summer academic program, so that it is really sending a message that it is an academic program, and it offers opportunities for kids that they are struggling in school, and that can be for a variety of reasons. It can be from sickness, you know, long-term illness, or, you know, a hospitalization or whatever it might be, that whether in a position where they have to make up some credit in a particular course, they can do that, or they can retake it because they're for enrichment purposes. The cost will still be $200 per course. The students can take up to two courses during the summer session. Students may recover credit in a specific course they failed. So the example I gave before, so if they actually failed junior English, they would take junior English through Edgenuity, they wouldn't just take the generic English course. And what our, the power of the viewing is that they would be, once we have the enrollment and kids have signed up, they will be able to customize. Edgenuity allows our teachers to customize the curriculum that they have to fit and match the curriculum that we offer. So obviously, it's not going to be, it's forty-five hours, so they can design it and make it to be a forty-five hour course for the purposes of the credit recovery for those students. They wouldn't be having to just skip over lessons, it would be condensed down to meet the forty-five hours that are required for the recovery credit. Students will be required to do their work in their online courses onsite for three hours, five days a week for three weeks in July. So that structure is the same in terms of the number of hours commitment here in the building. What we will do is we will group students by, if we have the math, a number of students who are taking math, whether they're taking Algebra I or whether they're taking Algebra II, they will be in a computer lab, and then will be a highly qualified math teacher in that room, and that's where the blended learning comes. So that teacher can offer support, specific, individualized support to the kids wherever they may need it as they work through, make progress online, you know, in the course. We will do the same thing for if they're science, the same thing with English and history. It may be that we were grouping, you know, some of the English and history fits together with either, you know, a humanities teacher and a history teacher to support those kids. So benefits of Edgenuity, what's, what's so great about this particular program? So we can customize the courses specific to our curriculum and to the specific learning style of the individual student. So we can actually go as far as we can customize the curriculum, but we can also customize in terms of the particular student. So if we know that they missed one particular quarter during the school year or a part of a quarter, we can customize their particular course to meet their specific needs and what they missed. So if there's content that they missed specific to them, we can customize their particular course for them. Students can take it for enrichment, right? This is something that we haven't been able to do before, and when I floated this idea of the opportunity to take courses for enrichment in the summer to some students, they were really excited about it, they were, you could see their little heads go, oh, I could take Georgia. And what we would do is we would make a note on their transcript saying that they will receive enrichment credit. We can't give them, obviously, it's not a full-length, full-blown course, so we can't at this point give them, you know, high school credit and use it towards, it won't be used to fulfill any graduation requirements, that stuff all has to be done, you know, the traditional way here in the school, in the building. But we will make a note that they took this course for enrichment, so that colleges will see that on their transcript that they did do that. It allows for the summer program to offer for both for the recovery enrichment, creating the positive academic setting, as I had mentioned earlier. There are approximately ninety-five courses available to students through Edgenuity, and I gave you a list of that, the national course list was in your, your handout, and it includes test prep, includes SAT prep and ACT prep. Edgenuity, I don't believe, has, has updated their SAT stuff yet to reflect the changes, because those changes are going to affect their SAT until 2016, but I would imagine that next year, that they will have those, the following summer, that SAT course will be updated to reflect the new structure of the SAT course, SAT, um, test, sorry. Edgenuity can provide parents with progress reports. They can set it up so that they can get weekly progress reports. The teachers who are in the classroom during the summer will be getting progress reports. They can check from down to the minute on how much time the students are spending working on a particular lesson. If the student's spending too much time and struggling and having to circle back and take the same unit over and over, then they can work with that student to help them move and pass the unit test so that they can move on to the progress on to the next unit. So they can, they, they can watch it live, they can go and check it at any given time, they can check to see if the student spent time working on it outside or the time they were in school. It went right down to the minutes per specific unit and also for assessments as well. And the students will experience a blended learning environment. So, you know, I believe that, you know, that the online learning is going to be a huge component of our students' future, whether it's in graduate school, in, in college, that they will, or even just professional development within their, their career, that they will have to take some sort of an online course. have to take some sort of an online course, either completely or partially. Of course, they're taking maybe online. So, this is a great opportunity for our students to learn, have exposure to the skill of taking a class online, but at the same time, having a teacher present who can offer support, give them feedback, help them if they're struggling with, within a particular content area. And the access for the middle school students, that Edgenuity has a specific program called the Summer Bridge Course Suite, which offers an ELA, math, and a science component to it, which we could also offer to our middle school students as a way to bridge in that transition from eighth grade into ninth grade. And then certainly, the world language, right? This is something that we haven't been able to offer in our summer school. It is a way for students to recruit credit within the world languages. So, Edgenuity offers in Spanish 1, 2, 3, French 1, 2, 3, and Latin 1 and 2. And if we have, we obviously hire a Spanish or a French teacher. If we have students who are going to be taking those in Edgenuity, so that there is a content area teacher there to provide support for them. And then the other piece, which is just, I didn't, I did this before I knew this, we're going to be piloting an American Sign Language course this summer during, as part of, during the summer. And this can also be another option for students with the world languages. And it's really something that we would like to explore down the road as being something we offer year-round as a course in our world language department. So, we're going to pilot it this summer. And it is in, the, the program, the organization, it is an online course. It fits in very well with the current model that, that we're suggesting.
Any other questions? Yep, thank you, Mrs. Regal. Any questions from the board? Mr. Francis?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. The two highlights, I like the idea on the, on the recovery part, that they can take the exact course that they failed as opposed to a generic course. I think that that's really important. And on the other end, it's good to see some enrichment. And as you say, anything that you can add to any of the students' transcripts, you know, it's not official, helps. And the very last piece, I think that's tremendous about piloting the Sign Language. As my daughter went to school, they did a lot of Sign Language, and I think it's important as we move forward. I think that that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any other comments?
I think it's a great program. A lot of the way, courses as well, too, much more advanced, so I think it's really a good advance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. I guess I just have one question. What would be the cost of additional? I know we're charging for the individual, but it's a numbers game, right? How many people actually are going to take it versus have, will run any numbers or have any estimations on what it would cost the district for the summer program?
So, it doesn't cost anything additional for the summer program. So, because we're going to be using Edgenuity during the school year, it covers it for the summer. So, so with the, the expense, what I, what I did is, because we're shifting away from VHS, which, you know, certainly was the gold standard, but over the past couple of years has sort of fallen behind with these other programs like Edgenuity, they're a little, a little outdated, they're very restrictive. And we've gotten that feedback from kids as well as from the teacher that has been working with our, within the VHS program, whose feedback is it is very restrictive. It also, one thing with VHS is that it ends before our current semester ends. So, a lot of VHS kids are done, oh, you know, four weeks before everybody else with their coursework, and it just stops, like it just, because it's set for 15 weeks and then that's it. So, with Edgenuity, we can design it so that that doesn't happen, so that we don't have that four-week, four-week window. So, I shifted the money, and VHS is also very expensive. So, shifting the money from that over to the Edgenuity, that the, what we're going to pay for the entire year for 1,000 kids covers the summer, summer school.
And then I guess my question, we mentioned bringing in experts in certain subject areas, and those would be teachers, so I would assume that comes with a cost. Is that when we reduce the $200 per course to pay our teaching staff?
Yeah. In addition to that, we have a grant for two teachers in the summer program, have a little bit of STEM service learning. So, we are able to hire, courtesy of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, a licensed biology teacher and a licensed math teacher to work in the program. So, the cost for those two educators will come out of the state funds, and the other tuition will be able to cover the cost of content, of the content area teachers that we might need.
Thank you, Dr. Bastieri. I'm sure you put in for that grant. We appreciate all the hard work you continue to do in that area. At this time, I'd just like to commend both of you. I think this is fantastic. We continue to grow, we continue to move forward, we continue to have more offerings for our students. I'm very intrigued by this new summer program, and I can't wait to hear in the fall how it works out. So, thank you for all your hard work. Please extend that to your, to our staff and all the individuals that worked on this.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have a citizens' forum. Dr. O'Connor, would anyone wish to speak this evening?
No one is registered, but we do have a number of visitors this evening. Anyone speaking this evening?
Would anyone wish to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move right along to the approval of minutes. Our co-organistic cutlist will present our minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Jefferson. I'll move the minutes of March 24, 2015, regular school committee meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, to approve the March 24, 2015, regular scheduled meeting minutes. All those in favor, please by a sign and a raise a aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous vote.
I'll move the minutes of March 24, 2015, executive session, school committee meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, to approve the March 24, 2015, executive session minute meetings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, chair votes aye as well. It's a unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass.
Thank you.
Our floor, Mr. Cutlass, and I'll present our payroll.
I'll move the payroll for the period ended March 26, 2015, to a amount of $1,156,010.92.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve the payroll paid in March 26, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
I'll move the payroll for the period ended April 9, 2015, to a amount of $1,172,418.18.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve the payroll paid in April 9, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Francis.
Next, our, next up, we have our consent agenda. Is there anyone wishing to take anything off the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda.
Aye.
I have a motion, I have a second, to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Okay, we're going to try out the Dr. O'Connor at this point for our superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you. If anyone is watching on television this evening, you'll notice that there are only four members instead of our customarily retired members on the school committee. I want to reward everyone in the community that Mrs. Lisa Pucha has resigned to her position. In a letter dated April 10th to the Tewksbury Town Court, Denise Grappio, Mrs. Pucha stated, "Please let this letter serve as my formal resignation from my position as a school committee representative on the Tewksbury Public School Committee effective as of 3:00 p.m. today, April 10, 2015. In light of the recent breach by the school district regarding the outer district's special education student information, I do not feel that I can adequately fulfill my role as a school committee member, given that my child's information was included at my wrist, and I feel that her privacy was breached. I have thoroughly endured working in my position as a Tewksbury School Committee representative over the past two years, and I hope to continue to serve the public in some other capacity in the near future." Again, this was submitted to the town court last Friday. There is a process by the town bylaws that both the school committee current members and the board of selectmen will be involved in the selection and replacement for Mrs. Pucha. That will take place over the next several weeks. If there are people who are interested in possibly serving, they should notify the town court of their interest. I would like to take this moment to thank Joy Beatrice and the Ryan Pack. They have donated $3,700 worth of technology to the Ryan School. HP Streams is, do you want to briefly?
Sure. It's a smaller than laptop, they're netbooks, they can go, students can use them for a variety of purposes and go online, use lots of applications. And it's a nice way for a whole class to go wireless with the device right in front of them to do their schoolwork.
And they're often, you know, they're smaller than even the screen or the iPad. They're, they're great, they're mobile.
They have a built-in keyboard.
And they're fabulous. So, we would like to thank the Ryan Pack again for that generous donation. At the Heathbrook School and the Traylon School, the kids have been involved in pennies for our patients, for the leukemia, the lymphoma society, and to date, they have raised $4,735 in cents. Now, my friends, a lot of pennies, they'll do that. I can't imagine how heavy that was to lift. So, we would like to thank, again, our school administrators, our staff, all of our students and families for, for just being exceptionally generous. We have coming up, the Mother-Son Brunch and Dance Saturday, May 9, at the Tewksbury Country Club between 10:00 and 11:30. It's $45 per couple and $20 for each additional child that may attend. There will be a photographer there, the O'Connor Studios, no relation to this O'Connor, but they will be there, they take great pictures. This, again, is taking place at the Tewksbury Country Club. And tickets are available online. You can print your own tickets right online, or you can stop into the center school at 139 Pleasant Street to pick up your tickets. The T H Theater Group is presenting Catch Me If You Can. This program will take place May 14th and 15th at 7:00 p.m. And May 16th, they're going to do a double header at 2:00 and 7:00. I will tell you, if you happened to catch any of the program earlier in the year, you know, it was a tremendous success, and guarantee this, too, will be a play that will be talked about for quite some time in Tewksbury. In your packet earlier this evening, I distributed to all of you a copy of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law Guide. It's a revision, there are very minor changes in there, but it's always good, anyway, to take the time to review the open meeting law, just so we do not want to follow any of those rules and regulations governing our meetings. And then finally, I wanted to alert you to an article that was in the paper the other day, in the Row of Sun, on our statement of interest. We're going to talk about that later on. But Chelsea is here, Chelsea Feinsten did an outstanding job, photos, and I think she captured the fact that we do have older buildings, 50, 60 years old, and have certainly expired in terms of their shelf life, if you will, and it is time for new schools. And we'll talk a little bit about the statement of interest later, but I wanted to make everybody aware of that. And that's all I have right now. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Regal.
Okay. From the consent agenda, I'd like to thank the Wamisit Lanes. You can see that they donated an assortment of bowling gear and the Bowls Ed program for our grades three through eight schools. I'd especially like to acknowledge Mr. Stephen Bourgeois, a Tewksbury resident. He's worked long hours, and together with our acting athletic director, Ron Druan, has sat with our PE teachers and talked about how bowling can be a critical unit within our PE program. So, I really want to thank him for his generosity and his time. We look forward to Wamisit Lane's opening, hopefully, late this summer. And it's that time of year again for our annual art show. This year marks our 31st annual event. It will be held on Friday, May 1, and Saturday, May 2. On Friday night, as you are aware, traditionally showcases not only the student art throughout the high school, but also the band and chorus performances. This year, we have, and I put in the citation in your packet, this year, we have a special new addition to the art show performances, which is our open mic performances. I know that some of you have attended the high school open mic monthly performances where students get up and show off their talents. They'll be doing that here at the art show, May 1, Friday night, that starts at 6:30, and the show runs through 9:00, Saturday, May 2. The art show is from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
I just want to do a follow-up to something we discussed last time at the school meeting. We discussed we had an engineering firm that had gone into Troy Hand and North Street, and at that meeting, we also said we were going to have air quality testing and mold testing. We had that testing done a week ago, last Monday, and even though we haven't received the official report yet, we did get a preliminary report, and the gentleman from TRC Solutions had come in, and he had told us that out of all the samples that they took at the Troy Hand School, none of them had indicated a problem. Once I do get the official report, I'll make sure it goes into a future package, just so everyone can be shared with it. And secondly, snow has finally, hopefully, dissipated. There are still little spots that had it, but we're starting to use our turf, track field, and I just wanted to let you know, I know some of you had known, we had some damage to the turf, and we had some damage to the track and the fence. The turf company came out yesterday, they blew all the little rubber pellets back into the turf, and they fixed everything that was to be fixed at the turf side. The track is going to be fixed by the end of this week. They have a company coming in, and they're going to fix the spots that got cut up from the machinery. And as soon as the snow, as of yesterday, the snow was not all gone at the fence, it was still gathered a little bit on either side. Once that is fixed, the turf company is also going to come back in and kind of put the fence back together and reseal it up. We have our first track meet tomorrow, so athletic director, Mr. Ron Druan, was trying to get everything together, so he would be all set for tomorrow. Strong field has been prepped and ready for use. And over April vacation, we do have some workers that are going to be coming in to do set field and strong field, they're going to clean up all the brush around the fences, and they're going to get rid of all the debris.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Next on our judges committee reports. Before we get into the committee reports, I would like to just say, you know, due to the recent resignation of Mrs. Pucha, the following reassignments will be made to the current school committee. So, for our policy task force, Mr. Dick will now be joining Mrs. Palamino on that. For the green committee, Mrs. Palamino will step back up, and Brian Dick will be the alternate. For the district security team, Mr. Jamie Cutlass will be joining Mrs. Palamino. And for negotiations, some of them haven't started, so for these negotiations, education support personnel will be Mr. Francis and Mrs. Palamino. Food service will be Mr. Cutlass and Mr. Francis, and nurses will be Mr. Francis and Mrs. Palamino. So, I just wanted to make sure we read that into the record. Mrs. Johnson, we can update all the materials and update our website, that new information, new assignments. So, moving right along to committee reports, there's nothing to report this evening on the high school building committee. There's nothing to report on the green committee. As far as the Tewksbury Education Foundation, we do have a quick update. They're having their meeting tomorrow night, all people are invited. It's April 15th at 7:00 p.m. right here at the high school, and they welcome all people to join this wonderful Tewksbury Education Foundation that continues to support all of our schools here in Tewksbury. They also wanted to mention that the spelling bee has been set, and it'll be June 8th and 9th, right here at Tewksbury Moore High School. And they're currently working with all the administrators and sending information out, and they'll be having their spelling bees internally, and then the finalists will be here at the spelling bee, right here at the high school. So, that was a wonderful event last year, and we're really looking forward to it. Again, we're getting the community involved, and we have different leaders within our community that will be judges again. We have different people that are going to get involved in that event. So, I encourage everyone, mark your calendar, even if you're a child or someone who knows is not in the spelling bee, it's a great take, and I encourage everyone to come out that night and support their Tewksbury public schools. Okay, at this time, Mr. Dick is going to present our policies.
Thanks, Ms. Schirr. Tonight, we have the first set of policies to rescind. It was our second and final reading. It's changes in the federal or state law rendered policy obsolete and valid for every place. Policy may no longer be relevant. Policy ACAB-R, such a harassment complaint procedure, ACAB-R, procedure for profession processing form complaints, ADA, Tewksbury Public Schools mission statement, ADB, school community drug policy, ADVA, possession of road non-alcoholic beverages, ADC, smoking on school premises, ADD, safe schools, IJN, DBA-R, email usage. So, I'd like to make a motion to rescind the policies. Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to rescind, to rescind the following policies. policies that, that Mr. Dick just described as are in your packet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. We'll rescind all those policies and those will be, that will be updated and reflected in our policy manual.
So these next set of policies, Madam Chair, this is revise and adopt, uh, N A S C policies. Policies recommended for revision to T P S policy, adopt N A S C, A S C policy. Second and finally, A C, non-discrimination. A C A, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. A C A B, sexual harassment. A C E, non-discrimination on basis of handicap. A D, A D D A, background checks. A D D A dash R. D C J I S, non-qualify policy. D J E, binding requirements. G C C D, domestic violence hate policy. I J N, D B, acceptable use policy, dash technology. I G N, D B dash R, acceptable use policy, technology administrative procedures for implementation. I G N, D B dash E, user agreement for participation in electronic communication systems. I G N, D C, school and district webpages. I G N, D C dash R, website guidelines and procedures for approval. I G N, D D, policy on Facebook and social networking websites. J H, student absences and exclusives. J I C, student discipline. J I I, student complaints and grievances. J K, student conduct. K D D A dash E, notice to the custodial parent that the non-custodial parent has requested student records. The last policy is L D A, student teaching and internships. So I'd like to make a motion to revise and adopt the N A S C, uh, S C policies.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the, the policies as Mr. Dick just read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. We'll adopt all the policies that were mentioned here this evening and will be reflected in the policy manual. At this time, we would like to encourage the community to reach out to Dr. O'Connor, Mr. Dick, or myself with any feedback and any of the policies that you may have out there. And as we will continue to go through the policy manual and bring to the school community member, school community meetings, um, for any feedback from the community. So thank you, Mr. Dick, for that.
Good work.
Moving right along to old business, um, I'm going to send that right over to you for the review and approval of F sixteen budget.
I have confirmed all of our members with the town manager and I asked his advice as to how it should be voted. It does need to be a roll call vote. He suggested that we vote on the proposed total school budget, debt being separate. Then we vote separately on the total school debt and then the grand total of the three. So I will ask that you, um, roll call vote for each one of those numbers that will be presented in the packets.
Now, Jim, I'll make a, uh, motion to approve the F Y sixteen school budget without debt, fifty million, three hundred nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars.
A second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor to approve, to vote to approve the F sixteen school budget without debt, fifty million, three hundred nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous vote, Mrs. Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the F Y sixteen school budget debt amount of three million, two hundred seventeen thousand, ninety-nine dollars.
A second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, vote to approve F Y sixteen school budget debt amount of three million, two hundred seventeen thousand, ninety-nine dollars. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Again, that's unanimous vote.
We also want to vote to approve the F Y sixteen grand total school budget of fifty-three million, five hundred twenty-seven thousand, and fifty-seven dollars.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second on the floor, vote to approve the F Y sixteen grand total school budget of fifty-three million, five hundred twenty-seven, and fifty-seven dollars. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Again, that's unanimous vote. At this time, I would like to, uh, sincerely appreciate all the efforts on part of our town manager, Mr. Richard Montory. Also, our board of selectmen, Mr. Todd Johnson, Mr. David Gay, Mr. Jim Wentworth, Mr. Bruce Penelias, who's here with us this evening, Mr. Mark Craftman, and our former member, Mr. Scott Wilson, as well as our finance committee, in which Mr. Ray Wizecki is the school representative. The collaboration on the part of the town with the schools has been remarkable and result in a better education for all of our students. And I want to sincerely, um, thank all those people and all the hard work that went into completing the two thousand sixteen school budget. Moving right along, Dr. O'Connor, M S B's statement of interest.
Uh, I just wanted to alert the committee that we've actually submitted for the third time, for the opening third time as the, the lucky charm. Uh, if you will, our statement of interest for our four elementary schools. Uh, I can tell you that, uh, we came close, uh, in year two in, uh, in the selection process. We did have a site visit by representatives for the M S B A. They were, uh, effusive in their description of our statement of interest, but it was very well done, thorough, detailed. However, we picked up some ideas from the representatives, the architects and the M S B A representative that was there, that, that probably were ways in which we could enhance, enhance our, our statement of interest. So we went back and we looked at one particular question that we had responded negatively to in the first two, uh, attempts. And that was, is your school overcrowded? And looking at the Troyland School, for the last two years, we were indicated, no. We couldn't necessarily say it was overcrowded with two hundred and thirty, forty students when five years ago, you had three hundred and forty students. However, we took a different view of the term overcrowded and we looked at how the space within the building has been repurposed over the years. And as a result of this, this repurposing, the building is overcrowded. We, we actually have in what was the former kindergarten, a computer lab where we run classes all day, every day, a writing class where we run writing instruction for, for our students, O T and P T share that space, and the library materials are all in that large cabinets room. We looked at that and said, because of the repurposing, the redesigning, we're overcrowded. We, we had special ed, uh, classes on a stage, for example, because you needed a small area for small group instruction. We shouldn't have students on a stage, period. So we went back to that question and answered affirmatively that the building was overcrowded, not in terms of student, number of students, but in terms of programs that we're offering have had an impact on the space within the building, resulting in overcrowded, uh, classrooms, uh, work areas. We then went and built that whole theme into other questions that were asked about the building. And, and, and we think that, uh, given the feedback we had, uh, from them, that, that we, we nailed it this time. Now, the only caveat is, there may be other school districts with greater need. Remember, they look at the need of the districts and the needs of the cities and towns, uh, in doing this. I, I'm hoping our need will stack up with anyone else's in the Commonwealth. And I understand the process is going to move perhaps a little quicker than it has in the past. So I, I'm hoping that within thirty-five days, uh, at the most sixty days, we should have a, uh, we go back to the M S B A.
Thanks, Dr. O'Connor. Next up is the Alice.
Yes, thank you. I have three items on the old business portion of the agenda. These are information only and the vote will be required. First is the Alice program. Um, you see the letter that was sent home to the Rins Schools, similar letter went home to the Tucksbury Middle High School parents last week. We had two Alice assemblies for those students. Uh, where Detective Andre Gonzalez of the Tucksbury Police Department informed and educated all of our students in new Alice protocols. Classroom visits followed the assembly by several members of, of our district security team member, including yourself, Mrs. Palamino. Um, we were able to answer student concerns that followed, um, after the assembly. Uh, plan is to perform those educational assemblies at all schools through the remainder of this year. We'll have our first live drill for the Alice protocol this week here at the high school. And then moving forward, we plan to have live drills at both the middle school and the Ryan for the school year ends. And the next item on the old business is the annual textbook census, grades K through eight. Each, each year, the assistant superintendent's office evaluates implemented textbooks and curriculum programs. You can see I sorted this by how old the programs are. And in the first ten lines of that report, um, some of those curriculum materials and programs are ten to twenty years old. So, the areas of priority as we review our curriculum to date, well, what I, I will also suggest is what you don't see are science materials in grades K through two. So areas of high priority are K to eight science. And then grade seven and eight, E L A, and grade eight, history as well. For the next meeting, I will have the same type of report, but lengthier regarding our high school textbooks and implemented programs. Um, I think I also want to sincerely thank you, the school committee, for your support and also the town manager for his support in one-time funds this year for, uh, to purchase the much-needed curriculum materials you need at every grade level. So, um, we very much appreciated that. And then finally on old business is the grade two diagnostic pilot assessment that is currently ongoing in two of our second grade classes. Um, and Sally Yor, who was here earlier tonight, I want to thank her. Her second grade class is participating in an online mid-year diagnostic assessment aligned to our curriculum frameworks with the state. And, and basically, this is an, an assessment that if we participate in moving forward, we'll give our teachers some, you know, mid-year, um, information that'll help improve instruction for those students. Sherry Malloy's second grade classroom, also at the Heathbrook Schools, participating in the pilot. And I want to report to you that it went amazing today. So the second grade students, two classes, went online, participated in the reading comprehension assessment, and, um, I just have to thank them. I'm so proud of them. They did just a brilliant job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Does the committee have any questions on anything that Mrs. Regan just went over? Okay, moving right along to new business, uh, first item up is the Tucksbury Historical Society.
Yes, uh, recently, uh, Mr. Dave Marcus approached us, uh, looking for our support to, uh, work with the Historical Society to promote the anniversary, the two-hundred-and-forty th century anniversary of Tucksbury Militia's March to Concord on April nineteenth, seventeen seventy-five to stop the American Revolutionary War. What the Historical Society is hoping to do is, uh, along the path actually taken by the Minutemen from Tucksbury, uh, that every mile or so Marcus would be put up and there would be, would be historical Marcus and would explain the reason for the march and the process and what these, these men went through marching onto Concord. Uh, I have authorized the distribution of these flyers home to our families and students. And, uh, Dave has asked if the committee would, uh, vote to endorse and support the Tucksbury Historical Society in the efforts to raise funds, uh, to create these Marcus along the route that was taken in seventeen seventy-five.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Francis.
A second.
Okay, there were no questions. I have a motion and I have a second on the floor, um, to support, just to vote to support, uh, the, for the Tucksbury Historical Society seeking, um, the approval to a glass erected more stones along the line of March Road, which the Tucksbury Motec Companies marched on April nineteenth, seventeen seventy-five from the Tucksbury Common to the Marion's Corner in Concord. All of yous in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. I think it's a wonderful idea, Dr. O'Connor.
Great idea. Sure.
Next item on the agenda, um, has to do with our collaborative.
The Valley Collaborative. Uh, member districts, we are looking for school committee approval, uh, for two different items. Uh, the first is the establishment of a capital reserve fund. The, the charter of the Valley Collaborative, and that charter, remember, is approved by all of you folks, uh, all of the, uh, school committees that are part of the, uh, team that make up the, uh, the Valley Collaborative, as well as by Massachusetts, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They're very involved in the re-establishment, if you will, of the charter for the Valley Collaborative. They are looking to establish a capital reserve fund. They can, by law, accumulate funds, uh, at a certain percentage level above their, uh, a certain percentage of their total intake for the year can be set aside. And they're looking to set aside some of that money that was defined in there. They're looking to, uh, move two hundred and fifty thousand into a capital reserve fund, knowing that, uh, over the next five to ten years, they hope to build that reserve up to one point, one point five million dollars. Keep in mind that for the first time, the collaborative now owns a building. They had been renting buildings. So roofs, uh, electrical upgrades, those sorts of things will take place, but they will be coming back to you to seek approval to spend that money during the, uh, lifetime of this capital reserve fund.
Are there any questions from the committee, Mr. Dick?
Uh, Jim, I was just, um, Dr. O'Connor, so two hundred and fifty is a lot, lots of the money. I was just wondering, like, the percent, how's that, is that just money left over from the budget that's getting put in there? What are the percentages of this, of tuition?
Yes. Uh, it, it is money that comes in to, uh, to, to the, uh, to the Valley Collaborative. Uh, they can put aside up to twenty percent that they can keep on reserve, uh, and, uh, this money would come out of that pool to be put special into the capital reserve fund. Okay. So our, our rates are, have not gone up, uh, Mr. Pelletier is not here. I know our rates have not gone up for the last two years. Uh, as a matter of fact, we actually had a slight decline because of, uh, some, uh, changes that took place at the collaborative. So I'm very confident, in fact, all of the eleven school committees that, uh, participate in the collaborative are, uh, voting to authorize these, uh, funds. But I understand some districts have already done some. Okay. Thank you.
Are there any of the questions from other members? Uh, it appears to me that Dr. Scott is being very proactive, uh, for the long-term goals. And I like to see this. I mean, I think the establishment of this reserve fund for the collaborative is very appropriate, certainly in this day and age, um, we have all these competing people for that budget and for budget expenditures. So I actually think this is great and I think she's being extremely proactive. So do I have a motion?
Um, just, uh, Madam Chair, I, I need you to read the, uh, the actual, so I was going to make the motion that the, this school committee for the Tucksbury Public Schools in accordance with, read it. Uh, we not only have to send a, uh, notice that you have authorized the vote, we actually have to send the minutes, copies of the minutes as well.
Okay, that sounds great. Do I have a motion from one of the members?
Well, I make a motion, uh, Madam Chair, that the Tucksbury School Committee authorizes the Valley Collaborative, um, to establish a capital reserve fund.
Mr. Dick, can you read me that the bold black, uh, that's this school committee for Tucksbury Public Schools? Do you have that right there?
Uh-uh.
There you go.
All right, so here's the motion. That this school committee for the, that this school committee for the Tucksbury Public Schools, Public Schools System, in accord, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter Seventy-one, Section Forty, hereby approves the adoption of the deferred payroll payment policy for the Valley Collaborative teacher. Well, that's the section.
That's the second one. You're ahead of the curve, but let's go back to, you know, those, Mr. Francis pointed to that, didn't he? There you go.
One more time.
All right. We're back to it. Um, all right, so the motion is that the school, that, that this school committee for the Tucksbury Public School System is in accordance with Article, uh, seven, Section seven of the Valley Collaborative Articles of Agreement and six oh three C M R fifty point oh seven ten, hereby approves the establishment of a capital reserve fund by the Valley Collaborative to support costs associated with the acquisition, maintenance, and improvement of its capital assets.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor for the Tucksbury School Committee in accordance with Article seven, Section seven of the Valley Collaborative Articles of Agreement and six oh three C M R fifty dash oh seven ten, hereby approves the establishment of a capital reserve fund by the Valley Collaborative to support costs associated with the acquisition, maintenance, and improvement of its capital assets. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's your unanimous vote, Dr. O'Connor.
Thank you. And the second vote that we're looking for references the deferred payroll payment policy. Currently at the collaborative, the staff receive their pay over, uh, twenty, uh, week period and over, uh, twenty pay periods over ten months. and over 20 payrolls over 10 months. They are looking to establish a pay period that would involve all 12 months, very similar to what we do here. In fact, most public schools offer their payrolls, and about 90% of the employees access their salary over a 12-month period. So they are looking to extend that courtesy as well to their staff.
Thank you, Dr. O'Connor. I think that's standard practice, and I think again, this is another great initiative by Dr. Scott. So do I have a motion?
Make that motion. That this, that the school committee for the town of Tewksbury, in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 40, hereby approves the adoption of the deferred payment, payroll payment policy for the Valley Collaborative teachers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor that the Tewksbury School Committee, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 40, hereby approves the adoption of the deferred payroll payment policy for the Valley Collaborative teachers. Again, this revolves, this involves a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes are yours as well. Again, that's unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay, moving right along, we're going to go over to the field trip for Tewksbury Memorial High School.
We have a packet that Tewksbury High School Spanish class is interested in a trip to Costa Rica in February 2016. You have all the information, including a description of the program from EF, Educational Tours, as well as a cover letter for Mrs.?
Crossed up.
Crossed up, Douglas, Spanish teacher and international club advisor. This is, again, tremendous, tremendous opportunity for our students.
Are there any questions on this proposal for the trip to Costa Rica?
Well, Chair, this is like the, the time is of the essence, right, for a hundred dollar discount. It's a, it's a, take a vote tonight, obviously, so.
It's the second time.
Just my further comments, I just didn't make a motion. Approve it.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the Tewksbury Memorial High School international field trip request to Costa Rica for February 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes are yours as well. I think that's a wonderful opportunity. Dr. O'Connor, the only thing I might ask is that, I think in the past, it's been wonderful when they do come back to this trip, if they come and present to the community to assume, I think that would be.
That's, that's great, because we have 37 kids going to Costa Rica, which is probably, so we'll let them come back and do a presentation.
I think that would be wonderful.
And is that, because she's also the advisor to the International Club, has the club members put together why international travel is so beneficial to students today? So I think it's really good for the connection.
Yeah, she did an excellent job in the packet. I love to see, you know, we talked about the trips, but I love to see when people actually take the trips and they come back, and they actually show us what they did, what they learned, because there is that whole educational aspect to it. So tell us that, thank you very much, we did see that in the packet.
I think one little tip, too, something new that Grass has brought to the international travel program is high school credit, as a result of the course. They write, they read, they then come back and do a project, so I'm sure you've seen plenty of that.
That was excellent. Thank you. Okay, moving right along to school choice.
Thank you. The Education Reform Act of 1993 requires the school committee to take in any revolt relative to participation in the school choice program. The Act also requires the superintendent to notify the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the action taken by the school committee. This notification must be sent prior to the end of June. I am recommending the school committee vote not to participate in the school choice program. I am offering this recommendation in consideration of the following reasons. We do have declining enrollment and the uncertainty of continued operations of our schools, and increased enrollment at Tewksbury Memorial High School. The building was constructed for 11 ended students, we are over 1,000, and I'm expecting that number to be even slightly higher next year. So with that, I need a vote in the committee. I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor that the Tewksbury School Committee vote not to participate in the school choice program. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dick, how do you vote? Chair votes are yours as well. It's unanimous, not to participate in the school choice. Okay, next on the agenda is what everyone has been asking about lately with all this snow, is the last day of school.
Barring a major snowstorm, over the next couple of weeks, we are looking now at June 19th as a half day, as the last day of school, and that last day of school is traditionally a half day in Tewksbury.
Do I have anyone here that would like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to have June 19, 2015, be the last day of school, and this is a half-day of school.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and I have a second on the floor that the last day of the Tewksbury Public School for the 2015, 2015 school year will be June 19, 2015, which will be a half a day. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dick, how do you vote? And the chair votes are yours as well. So it's official, barring low difficulties at our school this.
No, there's no, there's other incidents.
Okay, moving right along, we have the superintendent's letter.
I thank you. As, as the committee knows, I recently sent out a letter to parents of children with special needs. The letter went out to approximately 400-plus families here in town. I'm going to read the letter. I think it's important to have it in the minutes. It's Dear Parents and Guardians, I am writing to you to apologize for the inadvertent release of an internal document compiled to help me better understand the sudden increase in the number of students attending out-of-district schools. It is my understanding that the document has generated a high level of concern among parents, guardians, and community members, and has caused many of you to lose trust in the Tewksbury Public Schools and in me personally. For this, I am sincerely sorry. The document entitled Revised Data, Out-of-District Placement Data, was compiled by staff at my request in preparation of addressing the significant rise in out-of-district placements. I wanted to better understand the conditions under which students were being placed in out-of-district schools. Data fields in the document identify grade, school location, previous placement, year placement started, settlement or team decisions, level of placement cooperation, and notes. Names of students were not included. Although the document was inadvertently included in the March 24, 2015 school committee meeting agenda, it was not referred to or discussed during that meeting. I realize two specific data fields generated the highest level of concern. To fully understand the meaning of the data points, it is important to understand the context in which the data was compiled. First, I wanted to identify the conditions under which a student was placed in an out-of-district school in an attempt to plan how we might improve special education programming for all. I also wanted to know whether bending capacity through in-district programming would increase the likelihood parents might seriously consider returning their child to the Tewksbury Public Schools. In hindsight, the terms likely, less likely, and not likely would have been better word choices. I am very sorry for the anguish or embarrassment the document has caused to any individual or family. I cannot begin to tell you how embarrassed I am, and more importantly, how sorry I am to have caused many of you to lose the trust and respect of the Tewksbury Public Schools and me personally. I take my leadership role seriously. Trust and confidence is a critical aspect of successful school leadership, and I am truly sorry for what has been lost. I promise to work towards regaining the trust and confidence of parents, guardians, and students, and hope this correspondence will serve as the first step. Sincerely, John O'Connor, Superintendent of Schools. Again, that was sent out on April 2nd after the inadvertent release of data, and I know it has caused a lot of controversy in the community, and again, to the committee, I apologize. My job is to make sure there is no controversy in the community.
Thank you, Dr. O'Connor. I'd just like to make a brief statement regarding your letter. I want you to know that the school committee is, this current school committee is fully supportive of Dr. O'Connor's public policy. A mistake was made with the inadvertent release of specific information that was part of the budget process. Opinions vary, but let us be reminded that the Tewksbury Public Schools, under the leadership of our superintendent, Dr. O'Connor, follows policies and procedures for all students that have been established by the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Moving right along, let's go to the monthly financial budget report.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes. I have given you the monthly report. As you can see, there are many line items that were in the negative, so attached with the monthly report is also a budget transfer that I will need a roll call vote for. The budget transfer is an amount of $108,451. That is not in addition to an appropriation, it is just movement between the lines. A little bit about the report. The town manager has agreed, I read back in January, to move $512,028 from health insurance and from assessments into our operating accounts, so this will change. If you look at this new document, our new FY '15 appropriation is $38,962,200. And within the month of April, what we're going to be doing is, we've already started going through the payrolls, making sure we have everything in kind that we need to, and going through all the open purchase orders, making sure we can close things out and make sure we're accounting for everything. We're trying to foreshadow and see what's going to happen at the end of June, to make sure we're all set. So with that, I will need a roll call vote to approve the budget transfers, and then once the meeting is done, I will have each one of you sign it.
I'll make that motion to approve the transfer.
I'm going to wait. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the budget transfers in the amount of $108,451. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Francis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dick, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes are yours as well. So unanimous vote. Is there the end of year audit report?
Yep. Lastly, this is just for your informational purposes. We haven't need to be a report done every year, kind of summarize and figure out, I'm still spending and summarize all financials. This is for year ending June 30, 2014. We had Powers and Sullivan come in and do our internal audit, and we had, we did have one finding, and the finding was in reference to MSBA payments, progress payments. It's, I got the numbers from the town hall, and I misunderstood the numbers that she gave me. She gave me a grand total of the whole entire MSBA payment, and it should have only been for one fiscal year. So while the auditor was there, I ran in and I made the correction, and the, and I see in the finding we had, and it does reference that the amendment had been made, so I just wanted you to have it for your purposes.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. Any questions from anyone on the board this evening? Seeing none, moving right along to school committee matters of interest. Mr. Cutlass, do you have anything this evening?
Nothing this evening, Mrs. Francis.
Okay, Mr. Francis, do you have anything this evening?
Yeah, just for one thing, I want to thank the 900 or so veterans who came over sadly and voted. It was, it was a great turnout, but a lot of people came out, and I want to thank them for the support, and I want to thank them for the other teammates. There was community question.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Mr. Dick?
I think I have.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Dick. At this time, I would just like to congratulate Mr. Cutlass and Mr. Francis, and let them know that I'm really looking forward to continuing the great work we do there in the Tewksbury Public Schools, and I look forward to our continued work moving the district in the right direction. I do have one other thing for the community. At this time, I'd like to send out a reminder to the community that our annual town meeting is scheduled for May 4, 2015, at 8:00 p.m. at the high school. Your attendance is extremely important to support the articles that were taken to our schools. The following articles, we're asking for your support at town meeting. Article four, regarding the overall budget. Article 15, regarding special education out-of-district tuition, will be a transfer of $725,000 for special education out-of-district tuitions. Article 16, one-time expenditures for our school, we have school and building maintenance in the amount of $222,223. If you ask what that's for, we put in for roof repairs for elementary schools, a heating system at the Wynn, and retiring the doing school. And we also have the technology as well for that one. We also ask you to support Article 23, which has to do with the tax relief program. As many of you know, they requested to transfer $25,000 into that tax relief program, and as many of you know, we use a lot of those seniors in our schools and also throughout the town, so we're asking again to support those articles as well as other great things here for the town. So at this time, I have nothing further. Our next meeting is actually our town meeting, which I just mentioned, May 4, 2015, at 8:00 p.m. We will be having an executive session prior to that town meeting. Do we have any future high school, folding committee meetings, Mr. Francis or Mr. Cutlass?
I'll have to start.
Okay, thank you. And does anyone wish to put any future agenda items on for our next school committee meeting? Okay, not seeing any, again, feel free to go out to the chair at any time to add those agenda items if something was properly, if something was to come up for our next scheduled school committee meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn at this time?
I'll make that motion in a second.
I have a motion and a second during a regular school committee meeting, and again, our next scheduled time together will be the May 4 town meeting at 8:00 p.m. at the high school, while we will have an executive session prior to that. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes are yours as well. We will see everybody, and hopefully encourage everyone to come out to the town meeting and support your schools, May 4, at the high school at 8:00 p.m. Thank you.